All right, we're gonna go ahead and start. Public safety meeting, it is now four thirty-five. On Tuesday, October seventh. This meeting will be recorded, so we'll be, we'll be starting the meeting. So the purpose of this meeting today, I just wanna go around before we even get started. My name is LeVar Click Bruce, Chairperson of the Public Safety Committee. And then we're just gonna go around the room and hear, and then we'll go to the folks online to introduce yourselves. Please, I'll go to my right.
Brian Santinello, member of the committee.
I'm Hector Bellas, Engineering Department from DPW.
I don't know if you two wanna, you don't have to.
Michelle Hyde, Secretary of the Bay Area Network Council.
All right, I see Counselor Davila, so part of the.
Good afternoon, everybody.
And then if we could just, I don't know everybody, I see John and I see. G U L, I don't, I don't know what that is.
Hi, sorry, Leslie Galoney, I'm the newest member for the Community Relations Team for EverSource.
And I'm, and I'm John Caldwell, the manager of Community Relations for EverSource.
All right, thank you, John, and thank you, Leslie, for being here. So, I just wanna get started with this. Really, I go back to last year, we had, you, you all might have been part, not have been part of this, or even know about the meeting that we had last year regarding streetlights in our city. And it's, it's becoming, or it's continuing to be an issue in our city. And we had a couple accidents right in Mason Square area, over there by K F C. I guess it's a, it's a fatal, fatalities. So for me, this is, this is serious, I'm pretty sure it's serious for you all too, but it has to be addressed. And I have a member from the community who actually sent me a message prior to the accidents. And some of the errors she was referring to, quite frankly, if we got to it ahead of time, probably could have prevented some of these, some of these fatalities, or a fatality or two. And it's really disturbing to me, the response she received from your folks over at EverSource. And I, again, I typically don't, don't do this, but I'm really, really upset with EverSource because we're spending tons of money with EverSource, our bills are going up, the least we should be able to get is adequate lighting. Secondly, she reported it, and I'll introduce her later. She reported it to three one, also to EverSource, and the response back was basically, you need to go to the poll and read us a number before we can even take some action. To me, that's unacceptable. If something is reported, that's why you all have employees, they need to go after hours, if that's what it takes to find out what areas or what, what specific lights are out, to figure out what needs to be replaced. Not a, a, a senior citizen, not saying that this individual is, but we don't know that. Get out of their car, risk of being hurt, or injured, or attacked, or whatever the case may be, to, to get a, a poll number, to figure out what needs to be replaced. So we have to come up with a better system, I don't know if we need to do a call center, or twenty-four hour call center, have somebody on call, where we dispatch you out there. But something has to change, and it has to change today. We need to come up with a plan that we're gonna implement, and it can't be, you're gonna call three oh one, or you're gonna call us to report it, and we'll get back. If we don't have the, the poll number, we can't do nothing, that's not working anymore. It's not working anymore, I'm not accepting it, if I need to rally the city to come behind us to, to do something, we will do that, trust and believe in me. But something has to change, you, you guys need to come up with a plan that is going to work for our citizens in the city of Springfield. Enough is enough, enough is enough. So, that's where I'm at, that's where I want to open up, we can start the dialogue from there, because I, I, we need to know what is gonna be done moving forward in our city, or what has been being done, because, and, and again, it's been over a year, I had the meeting, nobody comes back to say, hey, this is what we're doing. It's always, we gotta reach out to y'all to figure out what's been going on in the city. So at what point do we have a true partnership, where you all reach out to us and say, hey, this is what we're doing, this is what we've been doing? So that way, when we get calls from our constituents, we can actually say something in good faith, no, this is what EverSource has been doing. But we can't do that because, well, I can't do that, because I don't, I don't even get correspondence, or I don't even know what's going on, as Chairman of the Public Safety. So, that's where I'm at, I pass it off to my colleagues, to see if they wanna say anything, and.
You know, I, I absolutely concur with what LeVar is saying. We spend millions of dollars to EverSource, and I think it's crazy to say you've gotta get out of your car, or go to a poll and get a number, when, that's dangerous to begin with, that shouldn't have to happen, just give the address, you know where they have to go, not a poll number, you know where it is. So, and I concur, and this, it's very frustrating, and now we've lost somebody, a pedestrian got hit, they're no longer here, and I'm not saying it's your fault, but you didn't help, that didn't help. So I concur with LeVar saying, and you, you better correct it, really, because we give you millions of dollars, millions of dollars, and we deserve more, and we should get more. But, you know, that's, that's my feeling.
I'll go to Counselor Govan, says a hands up. Counselor Govan, you on the floor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I, I'm sorry that I was a little bit late, but I did want, I asked Counselor Click Bruce to have a public safety meeting regarding this and other safety topics in our city, right? I actually have been talking about those streetlights since before I became a city councilor, which is about four years now. And the same thing is being said, you know, you have to call three one one, you have to get out in the middle of the night and see what number poll it is, which nobody is going to do that. So I agree with what you're saying, I might, I envision EverSource having someone assigned in, at night to go through the, the city, and, you know, designate where the lights need to be fixed, that would be an easy fix, and I don't think it's something too much to do. And I know that we do have another topic, I think Counselor Click Bruce about I wanted to talk about the speed signs in the city. Right now, you're installing, the city is, not EverSource. But we're installing those solar speed, speed limit signs, however, they don't tell you what your speed is. So unless you know that a red flashing light is that you're going over the speed limit, you don't know if you're going over the speed limit, because it doesn't say what the speed limit is. And I know they put one right in front of my house. So I see people all the time speeding down Berkshire Avenue, they don't know what the speed limit is, because there's no signs posted what the speed limit is. I think there's one sign way up the street that says, maybe says thirty-five, and I think it's thirty, then another sign down the street that says it's thirty. So, those are the two things that I appreciate, Counselor, for having this meeting, and for bringing this to everyone's attention. And I would hope that today we are gonna be able to get some solutions, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Whitfield?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate this meeting, and I appreciate your actual emotional response to it, because the person who lost their lives was a member of someone that's very active in the community, so we, and no one should lose their lives because the lights are out. Now, I do give EverSource some credit, because we had this issue probably like three years ago, where all those same lights were out. So, and EverSource were really hard to get them all back on, I just don't understand why they keep going out like so quickly. Because they are going out very, very quickly, and like Counselor said, a lot of people don't know the process, there is an app that people can go on and report, and I know all this because we've been here before. People can go on and report that the lights are out, I don't think there's enough awareness about that app, maybe that's something that could be put into the bill, or maybe it could be a commercial or something in the paper, that we can tell folks that there's an app out there, but people are not gonna get out to find the poll number, I don't even know where the poll number is on the poll, to be quite honest. We just need more awareness, but before the awareness, we need all these lights fixed, and we need them to stay on, because we were just here like not too long ago, we worked very diligently with Chris Ignoli and EverSource, and you guys, you were quick, you did get them fixed, so I am gonna give you some credit there, and they just went out again, so I don't know what the problem is, that we need to change the light poles, like, I would like some of those answers, but we do need to get a better system of, you know, making sure that those lights are fixed without putting that ownership on our residents and our constituents. Maybe folks go around the city from EverSource, and they can know, you know, figure out what lights are out themselves, but putting that ownership on the residents that don't even know where to go, look on the polls for these numbers, or whatever have you, that's just, that's just too much, so we do definitely have to get a better system in place. Thank you, Counselor Govan, for asking for this meeting, Counselor Click Bruce, for hosting it in such a timely fashion.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield, Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you for hosting this meeting. Let me start with what I think might be some good news. Me personally, my own street, my lights were replaced, the streetlights, it took six months, but they were replaced. This is a multi-layered problem, and let me say first of all, for the represent, for EverSource, that I understand that the problems that we're facing predates you. So let me put that out there first. But it is obvious that the council is really tired, more importantly, the people are tired of this.
Is he frozen?
Fro- Yeah, all right, we'll go back to. Counselor froze, all right, so we'll give Michelle Hyde an opportunity to speak, and then we'll go to EverSource, but Michelle Hyde kind of, well, did bring this to my attention, and that's what kind of prompted all of this to move forward.
Thank you. Yeah, so in a four-mile radius, there's thirty-one lights out. Now, I understand what Ms. Whitfield's saying about some app. I mean, I thought I was going through the process by going three one one, city tells me it's not their lights, not their responsibility. Gave me the number, I did call EverSource, EverSource gets back to me, probably within the same week, or maybe two weeks. But I'm gonna give you a week, got back to me and said, as you all say, the polls. Now thirty-one lights in the polls. Now, we all know, if there's a storm today, EverSource sends us a text. You mean, tell me you've got that kind of technology, and you can't tell me what lights you got out? That's pitiful, especially after I just heard Mr. Santinello say, millions of dollars. Millions of dollars, another hump in the road from the city isn't gonna save the next person's life. We, we gotta do better and be better. I mean, initially, when I did this, I was driving up the street, and I went only to my street, and it was fifteen lights out. And something just said, go a little further. So I went further up to TD Bank, and there's sixteen more lights out, I could have went further, there's probably more lights out. But, right there with that individual, and when, and, and, and I pray for the family, because I would have hated to be somebody in my family that lost their life, and I made this phone call to the city and to EverSource, and the lights are still out. What if that was your family member, you would make it a priority to turn the lights on. But when I heard that, I immediately got back on the phone again. It's not just your fault, EverSource, I'm not gonna say it, you guys aren't the owners anyway. Part of it's the city, some of the trees need to be cut back, and that area where that person got killed, it's really dark, so it could be trees covering up the lights. But to get the answer that I got, is to go back out and get the numbers at night, because you told me, this is what the person told me, I'm not making this up, they don't have people that work that late at night, now come on. There's a storm, there's somebody out there working to turn my lights back on, I see trucks out there.
Turn them off.
That was not a great answer. So John, and this, I don't, can't say your name, you guys need to take that back to the top, because it's not your issue, but it's their issue. And we need to, we need a date of when it's gonna start. How many more lives do we have to lose, we've already lost, how many lives on that street?
Some other by the cemetery.
You may not live here, but that's our main drag. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hyde, all right, we'll go to EverSource, I'm not sure who wants to take, take the lead, but those are our concerns, John. And we just, we need, we need some, some, some information, or what, some solutions, I should say, how we're gonna combat this.
Yeah, sure, I'm, I'm happy to, to step in here. First off, thank you for the opportunity to speak, Counselor Click Bruce, and, and everyone, all the other counselors who are here. And I guess I just wanna, you know, start off by addressing the initial issue that you, you rose in the beginning, you brought up in the beginning. I just, I, I wanna first just, you know, apologize for the difficulty that, you know, reporting some of these lights has, you know, it has posed to, to a lot of the constituents so far. It's not our intention to be difficult about this. And additionally, you know, my, my heart obviously goes out to the, to the families and the, and the individuals who were involved in that accident. Obviously, that's incredibly difficult, and if, and if obviously a light not being on during that contributed in any way, that is something that we obviously want to address and address immediately, so I, I wanna start there by acknowledging that, that that is an unfortunate circumstance, and, and we wanna work with you guys in order to, to rectify however we can to make sure that this doesn't happen in any small amount of way. So with that, with that said, just to like jump into kind of the, the details, the weeds here. As far as our inability to kind of know whether a light is on, is out, unfortunately, you, you mentioned storms, where storms were brought up, when a storm hits, we have a high amount of confidence that certain areas will be going out, and so when an individual service is cut off, we don't know that, right, we don't have that visibility. In a storm, if a tree falls down and knocks out, you know, fifty houses, we're able to see it in the aggregate, we, we can kind of see that the load drop, and so we can know that that's there. And we also invest heavily in sort of reporting mechanisms to work with your Emergency Management Director to understand when some of these outages happen. But in this instance, with small, with, with streetlights that don't draw a lot of power by themselves, it's difficult to understand when you're looking at the, the electric load in the system at, at a macro level, it's hard to see the deviations, as whether or not that's an outage, or just someone turned off or on their lights, or, you know, people went away on vacation. The reason we have, we did implement a, a process, and, and you guys are aware of it, you're, you know, it's an, it's an app, but it's really based on our website, right, you don't need to download anything onto your phone in order to do it, although you can, you can also report it through the, the EverSource app. But it, it is a simple process where you go to the, the EverSource website, eversource.com, select services right on the top, and then there's a streetlight request button there in order to report it, so it, it is, you know, once you get to the website, a two-click process to get to the form to actually allow us visibility into the fact that any of the, any given light is out. I also now just wanna address like the, the poll versus the address, like obviously, we do not want people putting themselves in danger, stepping in the street to read a, a poll number. But with that said, we still need to know where it is, so if you report it, I've confirmed with our internal teams that you can report an address, even if it's a rough address, if it's somewhere between a hundred and two hundred Main Street, throwing something out there, that at least helps us narrow the scope to understand which light is out, so that when we, we get that work order in, we can understand where it is, and then we can send someone out, so that they, they know where they're going. Otherwise, it, it would be pretty inefficient, we, we wouldn't be able to put these lights back on. So that's just the first step there, I just kind of wanna level set, and I think you guys already know it, but I'll, I'll also follow up with, with the direct link to where you can submit these, these work order requests. But as far as like looking at, you know, at, at the, the problem over time, as you guys see it, we did a quick poll recently on the, on the third of October, and it looks like we had at that time, so this is last week, roughly nine, roughly a hundred and nineteen total work orders in our system. Ninety had been assigned, and the plan was to get them done within a week. And generally, the turnaround time should be around less than a week in the average, obviously, there will be instances where that's different. And of the hundred and nineteen currently that we have in our queue, twenty-nine are sitting with engineering, so sometimes the lights need something other than, you know, it's just a, a blown fuse, or, or the, the bulb is out, or whatever it may be. We actually need to go understand what's happening, maybe with the feeder, or there might be something like deeper within the electrical system that needs to be addressed. We do have, like I said, generally under, under a week to, to address these, and we do have two full-time overhead contractor crews working Monday to Friday, as well as a, a civil crew dedicated to fixing these feed issues. And it, it is, although it may not seem today, if you look at an aggregate over, over time, at one time last year, we had about a thousand tickets in our system, and I believe that was probably around the time where you guys called us in before, which, which predated me. But just looking at the raw numbers of a thousand then to a hundred and nineteen today, I just bring that up to show that, that there is improvement, right, that we're at least going in the right direction, it may not be perfect yet, but I just wanted to call that out, that we, we are making improvements internally and dedicating crews to addressing this as quickly as possible. That's, you know, sort of in the, the short term. Longer term, what you may, you may have been getting letters as a resident, in a, in a customer of, of EverSource around this thing called, you know, smart meters or advanced metering infrastructure. So we're undergoing a, a large, large investment as a company in order to swap out old meters with these new smart ones, and what that means is, the old ones are, are basically just counters. So when it goes out, we don't know that that thing, that that meter is no longer counting, we actually have to have meter readers drive around and read the meter to give you the actual readout of that meter. Going forward with these smart meters, they will be connected wirelessly, so that we will be able to understand if any individual house is out, or any individual pole is ultimately out. Right now, we're focusing and prioritizing homes and businesses, but within roughly a year and a half to two years, we will be rolling this out to the individual poles as well. So when any given pole is out, we will have visibility into that near instantly. So, I bring that up just to say that in the short term, we are making some gains, like we are, we are improving the process, although it's not perfect, we understand that. We think we're, we're at least moving in the right direction. Longer term, we believe that we're, we're making a very substantial investment into our entire system that will address very specifically these issues. And just one other last thing I just wanted to call out, is that we also have been undergoing a an LED replacement program in, throughout the city. So we're basically replacing all roadside lights with LED lights from their older technologies, like using sodium, for example. And we are on target to complete that project at the end of the month, so by October thirty-first, which will have meant that we will have installed fourteen thousand new roadway lights in the city of Springfield over the course of three years, which is a, ahead of the five years, which is what we had initially planned. So it's all to say that that's part of the investment that we're making in the system, and I believe that that's part of why we're seeing the numbers drop in the way they are. That combined with the, the number of dedicated crews that we have allocated to the city of Springfield. And the last thing I'll say is, in, in the, in the very micro sense of the, the thirty-one poles that were, excuse me, the thirty-one lights that were reported out from Main Street to Boston Road, we were actually able to identify thirty. Last I checked, earlier today with our operations team. And the plan is actually tonight, we will have two crews out there on Main and Boston Road looking at those lights, so some, if they're not out there now, within the next few hours, we're expecting some crews to be out there addressing your problems specifically. So with that, I see, I see a couple hands up here, so I kick it back to you.
Yeah, so, so thank you, John, real quick, so thank you for those acclamation, and we have some stuff that are coming down the pipe, and again, I, I appreciate the work that you are doing. However, the, the purpose, the purpose of, reason why this meeting was called, and other things, don't get me wrong, was the purpose of our constituent calling in, and I'm pretty sure there's other constituents, but Michelle is kind of tied in, she, she kind of knows what to do, but I'm just, I'm just worried about the ones that don't know what to do. If they, you know, come across some lights and they go through your process, and things are being said like, you gotta get a poll number. In this case, she did give a landmark, specified street and areas, and she still was told to get a, to get a poll, a, a poll number. So, so there, there had, there's some disconnect between yourself and the staff, and telling our constituents one thing, but you're saying, you know, as long as they give a, a general area, they are able to go out, so to me, that's still a concern, but I think needs to be addressed. Great that we're doing all these great things that's coming down the pipe, and the things that you guys have been working on, but I'm trying to deal with this stuff in real time, and stuff that our constituents are dealing with in real time. So, that kind of didn't answer for me, my colleagues may feel different, but I just think that needs to be addressed, and a follow-up plan and, and kind of keep us abreast of, of what we're gonna be doing moving forward. So I think that, that, that needs to be addressed for me, but I, I'll yield the floor to my, to my colleagues, I see Counselor Whitfield had her hand up first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, John, just a couple questions, because the last time this was brought up, it was through the Mason Square C three initiative, that's more of the State Street area, and it was people in the Mason Square area that was reporting the lights out, and Michelle, I'm not sure if you said from Main Street to Boston Road, just wanted to know if some of those were in the State Street area too?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so that, I guess that's my concern, because you're right, it was over a thousand last time, and it was like really nuts, and you guys, they worked diligently to get that problem resolved, so based on what you're saying, like ninety percent of those outlights were were fixed. But I'm just wondering why those lights keep going out, and it, replacing them with the LED, will that solve that problem, because it seems like it's the same lights that's going out. So, I don't know if you have an answer to that.
Yeah, I, I don't have, I, I think it is specific to any given light, when there are groups of them that go out at once, sometimes it can be something else, right, something that's, that's wrong with like the feeder to that group of lights themselves, that needs to be re-engineered, something may have happened. Um, with some of the older lights, it was older technology, it didn't, it didn't work as well. Um, but we've been going through the process of updating those to new LED lights. Uh, in, 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 obviously they're relatively new, right? You know, we've replaced these over the last three years. Um, I can take that back uh, to the operations team to just understand like what. What is causing most of these issues? If it is just sort of. If it is like the older ones that are going out and we just haven't replaced those ones yet, in that the LED lights are functioning very smoothly. I can definitely take that back to our, our operations team, just to understand. You know, what is the root cause of the majority of these outages and is, you know, and how are we addressing that? So I, I'll take that as an action item. In additionally, um, Counselor Click Bruce, who had mentioned. The particular person who had called in the, the out, uh, the light that was out, uh, was still told to get a poll number. Um, I'm happy, I will definitely be following up on that as well, because you know, I have been, it has been confirmed to me multiple times that they do not need a poll number, but. But rather an address, just somewhere where we know where to send them. I'm happy to follow up with you uh, after, just to understand specifically where that, where that light was. Um, and I will check in with the operations team to understand why, why that was the case. Um, and finally, uh, the, the last thing I just wanted to mention. Is that we're, we're happy to, to work with the city, work with all of you and work with uh, three-one-one. Um, and if uh, we can have a quick touch base with uh, with those who are fielding three-one, one calls, just to make sure that they're, they're up to date. So if we don't get the, the message out to the masses from ever sources perspective. At least we can go to the, the one node that we know that they will be calling into. Uh, just to make sure that all the operators in the three-one-one side are aware of that, of that process. So then. It's not a, it's not our problem, it's ever source, but rather more constructive in the sense that. We don't own the lights, ever source is the one that needs to fix those. Here is exactly how you do it. So I'm definitely happy to follow up on that as well.
Thank you, John, for that.
I wasn't done.
Oh, I apologize.
No, that's okay, John. Um, thank you for answering all those questions. Um, you said fourteen thousand new roadway lights or poles?
They are lights, we're replacing them with LEDs.
Or LED. Did you say anything about poles being replaced?
Poles, no, they don't generally need to be replaced. It's uh. Usually when you get into the decorative lights, uh, that it becomes difficult and you need to replace the pole as well. Just because of the, you know, manufacturers and who's made them and whether or not it, it kind of works and jives with the, the LED lights themselves. But generally, we're not replacing all of those poles.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, finally, Counselor Click Bruce, I just wanted to share a screen. Real quick, just to show people how easily it is to go. It's all of our responsibility. It can't be. Pointing fingers back and forth to different individuals isn't gonna solve the problem, but if we really wanna keep our community safe. We all need to like try to chip in as best as possible. I'm not saying get out your car, get the poll number, but definitely learn in the process and three-one-one, not passing a buck. To ever source and then ever source is blaming whoever, that is not gonna solve it. So I just wanted to come to the screen where people can. Um, this is when you get to, you put in eversource.com, you come to this screen, you go to services right here and then streetlight request. And then it kind of guides you, um, um, what do you wanna repair it? Do you wanna track a request? So if you put a request in already, you can. Um, know the status and that's helpful because if they're supposed to get it done in a week. And it's like twenty days out, it gives us more data to um, hold ever source accountable. So I just wanted to show this for constituents that might be watching. Um, that we have to all take responsibility in keeping our community safe, because that's just like. Blaming city councilors for things that's kind of like out of our control. That's not something that I wanna get into a habit of doing. Um, because I know probably a year, year and a half ago, we did work with ever source diligently and Chris Ignoli. Richard Johnson was out on the streets actually getting all of those streetlight numbers. He, he was going to the polls and getting the numbers. Cause he wanted to keep the community safe. And I think that's the way that we have to do it together. Um, and because pointing fingers isn't gonna get it done. Although we do pay a lot of money, um, to ever source, I would just, I would just really, um, really, really stress the importance of educating. Our constituents and, and three-one-one on the correct process and procedures. Um, to fix the lights and the sooner, like if we can drop that turnaround time to forty-eight, seventy-two hours. That's even better. Once you get all of the new LED lights um, installed. Ho- I'm hoping, I'm praying that that, that is a better process. So I just did want to say those things. Um, and I'll turn the floor back over to you, um, counselor.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. And yeah, I don't, I agree. Uh, I, we don't do pointing the fingers. Uh, it was just. Again, Michelle brought it to our attention where she actually got a call or a call back saying that she had to go out and. Get a poll number and John specifically came back to us and saying, well, that, as long as you kind of give a general area. You don't necessarily get a, you have to get a poll number. So that's, that's where I was coming at with, um. Not pointing, I think ever source does great work. Uh, but I just think that the process just has to be better. How do we improve it, I should say? Because everybody doesn't have a, a smartphone or access to the internet or whatever the case may be. So how do we? How do we make it easier for, for everybody? And, and that's, that's, I think that's what we're trying to advocate for. To, to improve the process. Um, so that's, that's where I'm at with it, so.
Absolutely. I wasn't blaming you, counselor at all. I was just saying in general, because I missed the first part of the meeting, so.
Yeah, yeah. Um, thank you, Counselor Whitfield. I appreciate you. Um.
Yes, can, can that link for ever so it can add it to the city website?
That's something we can talk to them about.
I have a lot of calls that they think it's not us is. Uh, ever so you have to contact ever source.
Okay, I'll, I'll definitely check into that. Thank you. That's a good, that's a, that's a good, good one there. Thank you, actor. So I'll go to our counselors. Um, before I do that, um, Leslie, did you wanna say anything? I apologize when I acknowledged you earlier. I know John's kind of taking the lead. Um, so I just wanted to see if you had anything.
No worries. I'm actually going to drop the link in the chat right now, just so it's easily accessible for you.
Okay. All right, so we'll go to Counselor Govan and then Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so John, thank you for, for that, um. Ex- explanation and description of what has happened and what's going to happen. Um, when you talk about investments. Uh, it kind of like makes me cringe because I know that investments mean money, right? And I, uh, every time uh, someone gets their electricity bill, their gas bill. I get phone calls because they're so high. And not just the, the electricity supply, but the delivery charge. So I imagine with those investments that you guys are making, which apparently need to be made and, and hopefully will make it better for all of us. Um, that's going to increase our bills. And because of that, and because we pay so much already, like Counselor Whitfield said. Um, I think we should be expecting, you know, that our lights are on, on our streets. Um, in our houses, of course, um, and not have to. I guess constantly be trying to figure out how to report. Thank you for, um, putting that back, um. In the, in the chat, the link in the chat. Um, so our expectations for ever source because of the high um, charges that our residents pay. The city pays. Um, we do have some high expectations of you. And I know that you guys are up for the challenge and you're going to meet it. So um, I'm really looking forward to some, some good work being done in the future. Um, a question, I live in Indian Orchard. And I take two ninety-one home. And I don't know whose light that is, but at the entrance of the exit to Indian Orchard, the light to. When you first get onto the exit is off all the time. Then at the end of the um, exit, when you come out, it's also off. That means that it's very dark. If I'm coming home at nine, ten o'clock from a meeting from City Hall, that's what I take. And I don't know whose number that is. Um, whose light pole that is, is it the city's? Because it's on the ma- on, on two ninety-one or is it the highway department? Or is ever source gonna take care of it?
To answer that question, I, I don't know, honestly. Um, I, I'll need to take this back to, to understand whether or not we own that pole or not. Um, but I, I think I got, were you saying it's um, the, the exit for Indian Orchard on two ninety-one? Both in the beginning and at the end of that exit?
And then, and then intermittently on the exit, sometimes the lights aren't working, sometimes they are. Um, and that's why I thought it would be a great idea for you to assign possibly one or two people. To go out, like, let's say, I don't know, from. Eleven to seven maybe, right? To drive around and, and take note of those lights that are out. At least until we get kind of like a system that should be automatic where, okay, a light is out. Ever source gets a notice, okay, this light is out, we'll take care of it. So that the residents don't have, they have another concern that they have to worry about, you know? Um, I really applaud Michelle for coming out and for reporting this and for talking about it. Because I, like I said, I've been talking about this, I would say for at least the last ten years. Um, so this is something that really, really needs to happen. Is that something that is feasible for ever source to do in the meantime, right?
Yeah, just to, to answer that directly is, I. I don't, I don't think that that's feasible uh, wi- with respect, only because of this reason is that. Um, the first thing that you bring up is uh, was bills, right? And, and the investments that we're making. It is expensive uh, in order to sort of like have someone out at all times to do the, to do that work. And secondarily, I'd be worried at. The minute you drive down one street, to, to drive every single street of the, of the city of Springfield. It would, it would take some time. And so a light could go out. That you've already driven past, but you think that it's fine in the meantime. And so there, there can be like the, the, the time issue there. It's like when the light went out and you've already checked that street. And in order to make sure, get around that, you would need even more people on those streets, double checking the work, which would just add expenses to it. Um, so what, you know, what we've opted to do in the meantime, in a sense is, is sort of crowdsourcing it. Um, is the idea that if a light goes out. Anyone in the city can access that link and anyone in the city can report that. Uh, so that we would know immediately, rather than waiting for a car to drive around and, and discover it at some point. Um, so we believe, although not perfect, we believe that the current system. Is probably better both from a financial perspective and from an operational perspective. Uh, to discovering those, those outed, you know, those lights that are out. But yeah, ultimately, the, the end goal would be, is, is the instant, is the advanced uh, metering infrastructure. Yeah, I, I think that that really is ultimately gonna be the answer.
Yeah, because the only reason I thought about and I think about that is because. That's ever source's job and I'm, I'm not blaming, I'm assigning, right, accountability. Our, our job as residents, right, is basically to pay taxes, to make sure that, you know, we do our part to keep our city safe. And then if we have to think about another thing, oh, I have to make sure I remember when I get home to log into this app or, you know. Click onto this link I have to, to report that light. Honestly, I'm gonna tell you right now, by the time I get home. I have a granddaughter, I have a husband. And I have a million other things on my mind, so reporting that light out is the last thing on my mind, right? So, so I don't even know if I've reported. I think I've called three-one-one a couple of times about it, but. I have not because of, of the business that, that I do, my busyness. Um, and I'm sure that a lot of the other residents are feeling the same way. You know, Richard Johnson does not have time to go around looking at poll numbers to report lights out, you know? I know he's got other things that he has to do and all of us are, are in that same boat. So. I really appreciate that. We're all going to be working to, going to continue to work together. Um, and I'm hoping that it doesn't take ten years for us to get to a point where this issue is resolved. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Counselor Govan. Counselor Davila?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry that I got frozen before. Uh, but John, uh, good afternoon again. And just to summarize what I was saying before. Uh, I realize that most, a lot of the problems that we are facing now pro- probably predates you, uh, and Ms. Coloney as well. Uh, so, but let me tell you what, uh, I'm saying a little bit of good news. In my own neighborhood. Uh, my lights were changed in the, the facility. The problem is that it took five to six months to get changed. Uh, but nevertheless, uh, they did get changed. Now. The problem that we have now, some of the feedback that I'm getting back is that those LED lights, which you mentioned, uh, are too bright. And uh, I have a particular uh, constituent who sent me some pictures. And I'm like, it's really shining. It's like a high lumen going through. Uh, her windows and I, and honestly, it, it, I don't know how she does. So before I forget, uh, if uh, I won't, if I could get your email, I would like to follow in that particular case with you. I'm also hearing uh, that some people are complaining about the LED dies, the LED lights are too bright. Uh, and so we need to start looking at that to see how we can compensate. Um, a, that issue. Maybe, John, you can give your email to the city council staff?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll drop her right in the, in the chat there and I'll also, uh, I can follow up with you separately, just in case.
I do, I do believe this Coloney has my email as well. Uh, and so, John, uh, I. You talked about the LED lights is gonna be done at the month, uh, the end of this month, I believe, which is fantastic. And. We know very well that this is the lighting situation. It's not only public safety, but in my mind, it's also public, uh, it's economic development. Good lighting also leads to economic development. Nobody wants to come to a dark city. And I think that what is clear to me, extremely clear, is that this system that we have a reporting. The light is not working. I agree with my, with my colleagues, nobody is confusing. Even I, John, have gone out. I can find the darn numbers, either they're falling off or they're too small or they're rustic. Because of the years passed. So we do need to come up with a, with a different system. Now, I will propose to you, and I remember when we had a meeting. On this about, maybe about five months ago. That like Counselor LaVie, uh, Click just said. We were told to give the proximity of where the light is. Now, when I call, if I find the number, I give the number and I try to anyways give a proximity. But it has happened to me that some people have asked me, some people both in the three-one-one, uh, have asked me for. For the uh, number and it's like, well, I couldn't find it. So I don't know what's getting lost in translation, but it seems to me that we need to nip the reporting issue on the butt. And make it easier, user-friendly for people. Who also wanna have, I will be remiss if I say this to you, not, not mention this again. Not only public safety, but also I believe, don't quote me on my map. That we pay ever source, the city of Springfield pays ever source, that give between three and seven million dollars. For the lights. On the roads. And that comes out of people's taxes, as we all know. It is also my understanding that if a light is out for more than three days, we are supposed to get reimbursed. Well, I asked a question about this and. The answer that guy is, like, we will tell you after the LED light conversions are done. Well. That's gonna skew the numbers and we will never really know how much money we are supposed to get reimbursed. But just to put that out there as well, because uh, you know, we, we, we are partners, as we said before. But to have a partnership, uh, there has got to be open communication. Uh, and transparency and something is broken in the system, seriously broke. And you need to stop now because it's costing people money, it's costing the city money. And it's costing, I hate to say it this way, I don't know the particulars of accident, but it could potentially cost lives. Uh, and I'm really getting tired, John, uh, with all your respect. Of having meetings with ever source. They shake their head, it tells yes, and nothing really changes. So, John, if you have a opportunity, if you wanna comment, I welcome your, your, uh, your comments on this. Thank you, John.
Sure, yeah. Thank you for that, counselor. Um, I guess what I would say to that is I'll, I'll need to double check, you know, a- as to sort of where that. Currently stands when you were talking about sort of the, how much you're, you're paying ever source for maintaining the lights in, in the three-day. Um, reimbursement, I, I'll need to, you know, bring that back to the team. I can't give you an answer right now. Um, but I think, you know, obviously you had alluded to, you know, going forward, the. Um, but I think, you know, obviously you had alluded to, you know, going forward, the LEDs, um, that, that will improve the process, right? That, that will improve. They'll have, they'll be better technology, they'll last longer. They're brighter, uh, which I guess is good, good in some cases, right? Um, not, not for everybody. Um, so I, I can definitely take that back. Uh, and I agree, you know, it, it's, it's working together, it's a partnership. Just how do we make this easy for people to report this stuff? And again, like, I just wanna allude to, you know, what I had said earlier. Uh, I'll be checking in, especially on this, this particular ticket, that if someone reports an address and, and we tell them that they need a poll number, um, that, that that's not good enough, right? We, we should be able to figure it out from an address and go to the address and put it into, right? Because we're not putting poll numbers into our, into ways, uh, we're, we're, we're putting addresses in. So I can definitely double check in that, in, into that for you. Um, but I, I do just wanna push back slightly in, in, uh, the, the idea that things aren't getting better. They're trending in the right way, right? You know, like there are fewer, fewer outages. We're addressing the lights in a quicker fashion. There's less of a backlog, um, in that, obviously, you know, we were able to upgrade the lights, uh, two years before we had intended. Um, so we are, we are committed to this partnership, and, and that's the only reason I wanna bring that up, is, is not to refute you, but just to hopefully add a little evidence in the undergird, sort of my point, that, that we are committed to partnering with the city in, in doing this, uh, in the right way.
I understand, but John, if, if I may, uh, I hear you, and I respectfully listen to your pushback. Uh, you know, I, I try to be optimistic myself, uh, because we have to govern, we have to move forward, we have to provide services, both you and us. In my own personal situation here, which happens to everybody, five to six months to get this light replaced, come on. Now, I know this, we were told before by you guys, that you have this tough issue. And I believe that they told us that they were gonna bring another crew from Connecticut, perhaps, or somewhere, uh, to help us augment the servicing to light poles and the lights here in the city of Springfield. So that leads me to my other question, John. Uh, how many crews do we have in Springfield dedicated for the streetlights? And are we sharing those, uh, we sharing those crews with the surrounding communities?
So right now, we do have fu- two full-time overhead contractor crews, uh, working Monday to Friday. And then we do have a civil crew dedicated to fixing feeds in, in the city of Springfield.
Dedicated, okay, alright. So John, uh, I will, uh, send you that specific for that, uh, constituent of mine. Uh, listen, you could say that, you know, you fix something and people are gonna complain, but I, I, we are, I tell you, I saw it myself. It's, it's like really putting a high beam through your window. And then we need, I think we need to address that because it's happening to my constituent. I'm sure it has happened, is happening, and will happen throughout the city as the LED, LED lights become the light. With that being said, John, I do, for the bottom of my heart, thank you, uh, for, for your, for your, um, for your answers. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Davila, uh, See Your Hand, Counselor Govan, uh, Counselor, uh, Sentinello, and then Counselor Govan.
Yeah, um, John, just real quick, um, Michelle brought up about thirty lights that were out. And you mentioned that you counted thirty lights that were out, correct? Did I hear you correctly?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, and you said there was a hundred and ten work orders presently. Are those thirty in addition to the one ten? Or are those thirty part of the one ten?
It was. Yeah, it was a hundred and nineteen tickets as of, uh, October third. Um, I believe it was intimated to me that those were inclusive of the, the hundred and nineteen.
Okay, thank you so much. And I just wanna give you credit because those LED lights work to reduce crime in any city. Uh, they're very bright and they work. Uh, and you're way ahead of schedule, uh, because I think you have a hundred and, uh, uh, sixteen thousand lights approximately?
Yes, a- approximately, uh, somewhere around, you fo- roughly fourteen thousand road lights. And then we'd, we'd need to add the additional other lights that are decorative and, and whatnot. But yeah, o- over fourteen thousand.
Over fourteen thousand, you're over, you're almost there. You're almost there with the LED lights, correct?
Correct, at the end of the month.
So I wanna give you credit there because those LED, LED lights are very, very, they're responsible for, for reducing crime in the city of Springfield, there's no question about it. So I wanna give you credit there.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor Sentinello, and this will be our last one, 'cause we have another item on the agenda. Uh, Counselor Govan, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was actually going to ask you about, is the other item on the agenda, the one that I wanted to talk about?
Yeah, Hector is here to talk about that, the EverSource one.
Excellent.
So.
John, again, EverSource, um, well, um, do you want me to start with that agenda item, or?
Well, we have one, we have more, one more question, Michelle has a question.
So, John, what would the?
Okay, go ahead.
But what would, under the normal circumstances, would be the turnaround time for lights being out and being fixed? Because this has been a month. And then unfortunately, we had that young li- uh, whoever that was that got hit. To me, that escalated the situation.
So generally, it should be within a week, is, is generally the, the time it should take for it to come in, for us to understand the work order, assign it, and send a crew out there to, to ultimately fix it. But that's if everything, right, if it's a simple fix. Most of them are simple. Um, but there are instances where you, you need to do additional troubleshooting, uh, potentially redesign it, get an engineer involved. Uh, in those cases, i- it's variable. I don't know the specifics around these, those particular thirty, uh, wh- whether it was a simple fix or not. Um, but I can tell you that obviously, um, we are taking it very seriously, and we do, we do have a, a crew out there tonight.
Thank you so much, appreciation.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Leslie. John, you're a class act. Thank you for standing in and answering all of our questions. Appreciate you. I know it's not easy, but again, I thank you for, uh, answering the tough questions and looking forward to working with you, uh, moving forward and, uh, coming up with some, some real concrete solutions for our city.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Counselors. Thank you, Counselor Click Bruce, who's always been firm but very fair with us. So I, I appreciate the opportunity to, uh, to come here and answer your questions.
Alright, thank you. Have a good night.
You as well.
You're the same. Bye.
Alright, Counselor Govan, I know this was your, uh, issue next. We do have Hector here to speak on behalf of DPW, Chris Ignome.
Sorry, I got muted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much, and thank you, um, for putting this on the agenda, uh, Mr. Chair. So, the, like, as I said earlier, the, um, we're trying to work on speeding in the city, which is a big problem all over the place. Um, and I know that we're putting up the solar speed limit signs. However, we don't have what the speed limits are anywhere near those signs. Um, I'm wondering from Hector, and I know that there's only one guy in the sign department putting up signs or making signs, I'm not sure what it is, but we have to have that problem fixed. Uh, my constituent or my neighbor in Indian Orchard, Roger Zapke, who is very big on this, wanted to be at this meeting. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to send him the, the link, um, for him to join, but he wanted to talk to someone about this. Um, because he's very concerned, especially on Main Street in Indian Orchard. We just passed the, um, the rule that the, the speed limit is twenty-five, but those speed limit signs aren't on Main Street. I think there's one somewhere, but there's still other thirty mile an hour speed limits up there. Um, so we have to get that fixed, and I just wanted to know what the, um, what the solution is going to be.
Uh, Counselor Javon? Yeah. Uh, you don't know is, uh, some have the signs or none of the rather have the signs?
None of them have the signs. I have not seen a solar speed limit with a, a speed limit sign under it.
And some have the thirty miles instead of the twenty-five.
On Main, on Main Street, there are two, I think, a couple of speed limit signs, but they're not where the solar speed limit sign is. But one of them has thirty and the actual is twenty-five. I'm, I'm wondering if there's a way for us to put more speed limit signs up? You know, what the speed limit is all over the city, because I feel like people don't really know what the speed limit is. They think it's thirty-five. So they're going forty-five. Some of them, some of them are going fifty, fifty-five miles an hour, and there are kids out here. And I'm not saying just the residents. I've seen school bus drivers go past the speed limit like that. Some of our city vehicles are going past the speed limit. So if we put the speed limit signs up, I know people say, oh, they don't pay attention to that, but at least they'll be there, and at least they'll know.
Yeah. And those, those rather is in Indian Orchard or in different places in Springfield?
Indian Orchard. I'm talking about Indian Orchard in Ward Eight, yeah.
But there's in, in different places, okay. Yeah, I, I can send an order to put those signs on top of the rather, or like thirty miles, twenty-five. Uh, I can speak with Chris and say, yeah, let me send an order for, I don't know how much we have in the city.
And we have a lot, and I think we need more of the speed limit signs, as I said. Like, I'm wa- I'm driving down Berkshire Avenue right now. I think I've seen two speed limit signs. And Berkshire Avenue is huge. It's long. There's only two. And there's one by the school, of course, but, you know, that one said it's twenty miles an hour when you're going to the school bus, bus, uh, bus, school buses don't go that slow when there's a school in session. Um, so we need to slow the, the speed of the, of the cars and the vehicles down in the city. And I think that might be a way for us to, at least another method to do it. And I, when you put an order in, Hector, how long is that gonna take?
And, uh, because the sign department is another department. I send the order and they have, I don't know, they have a few signs because they work with highway and bridges too, then other department. Work the engineer and highway. And I don't know how much work they have, maybe.
Well, then maybe we need to call them in here and find out. Because I know I've talked to you a few times, and we, I, we wanted the speed limit sign up on Main Street. We want it changed to twenty-five. Um, and I think the, the order was put in like in May or April or something, and then it just got put up like maybe a month ago.
Yeah.
There was only one sign guy.
If we have to install the pole, we have to call, um, Digsafe. That, that takes like three more days.
Okay, so I, I just want us to do something. And if we can do it sooner rather than later, I think it will be better for the entire city.
Yeah, I can, I can, in order to put those signs, no, uh, especially the one that the, the speed limit, uh, solar rather, rather machine. To do that. I know how much we have in the city, but I'm not gonna do it in Indian Orchard. I have to do it on, on, on the city, so.
Yeah, and, and I would expect you to, because I think the entire city, everywhere I go, the entire city complains about speed, you know, speeding cars. Um, so I think that would make sense. I'm, I apologize, uh, Mr. Chair.
I saw this. So, so Hector, um, I, I hear what Counselor Govan is, is, is raising. So can we come up with a concrete plan to, to address throughout the city? Um,
Yeah, yeah. Um, so what I'm gonna do is, um, I have to verify how much we have in the city, in what location. And, and see, uh, uh, how much we need for the, because, depending on the location, it can be thirty-five, can be thirty, I have to be making inventory first.
Okay. So can, you're gonna do that, then you're gonna follow up with us?
Yes.
Please do that, so that way we can, uh, get this addressed and let our constituents know, uh, what the plan is moving forward. So that would be helpful for us.
Yeah, I'm gonna do an inventory, how much we need for twenty-five, thirty, or thirty-five. And how, and with the location of the machines to do the order.
And then also, Counselor Govan, also, if you can just check into, um, Berkshire, Berkshire Ave.
Berkshire.
I guess she's asking if we can put some more, uh, check your, some sign, signs up there as well. So if you can check that out, see if that, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, telling people, my apologies, telling people what the speed limit is, because I don't think people really know.
Yeah, Berkshire Ave, I can do it tomorrow, because it's, I, it's easy to send the order. I know the speed limit already.
Okay, great.
Is, is that your question, uh, Counselor Govan?
That is. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I reappre- appreciate it, and thank you, um, Hector.
Yeah, most.
Alright, uh, Counsel, Counselor Davila? Muted, you're on mute, sir.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good to see you, Hector. Uh, Hector, yesterday talking about stop signs, we approved in the council a whole bunch of stop signs for the X project, which is gonna be, which already started at different stages. Uh, I didn't realize that we only have one guy making signs. Uh, is he the guy in charge of making those bunch of signs we approved? Uh, or are they, where they coming from? Uh, we're gonna have enough, and are they gonna be in time?
No, that's gonna be massed up. They're gonna supply signs and we have to maintain it.
Okay, okay. And, and we have the manpower to maintain them?
Yeah, when the project is done, the Spring, city of Springfield has to maintain the signs. But the signs, but the installation is, everything is mass, massed up.
Okay. Alright, uh, thank you, uh, Hector. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Alright, thank you, Counselor Davila. Uh, Counselor Govan, do you have anything else? Uh, it looks like you're frozen there.
No, that was it. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, for having the meeting.
Alright, thank you so much. Alright, Hector, uh, thank you for your answering the questions. Thank you for coming in. Thank you for sitting in. Um, it is now five thirty-eight on, uh, October seventh. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.